To the city attorney for disclosure.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The city was, city council is in closed session this evening on public employee performance evaluation, and there's no reportable action out of that item.
Thanks, Steve. Now, we will adjourn to the special, uh, from the special closed meeting. Uh, we will now call the special council meeting of March twenty-fourth to order, please. If I could have the roll call.
Council members, Payne?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
Shelton?
Here. If everyone could rise for the flag salute. But as we rise, because of the airplane that crashed, just for a moment, I believe that, Andrew, did you, were able to find those names? And I would like for Andrew Meredith to read off those names if you could remember those families.
We're asking you to please keep in mind the Poland family. They have deep roots here in this community. Michael and Vanessa Poland were both killed in that tragic accident, as well as their children, seven-year-old Christopher and nine-year-old Sydney.
And the other families, too. Thank you. Thank you. We'll have the flag salute now.
.................................................................................
No, what's up, Matt? Thank you, Ben. Okay. Would you have the video statement, please?
This special meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable fourteen, the government affairs channel, on the Comcast and Shore West cable systems. This meeting is being videotaped and will be shown on Wednesday, March twenty-fifth, at nine P.M., and Monday, March thirtieth, at eight P.M. on Channel fourteen. It will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. And it's also live video streaming on www.cigalt.ca.us. This meeting is closed captioned. A VHS copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. First item we have is agenda approval additions and or deletions. Are there any?
I'd like to pull D five and six.
D five and six?
Yes.
D four and seven?
Which one?
Four and seven?
Four and seven?
I hear one, two, and three.
D nine and ten.
Oh!
Nine and ten. Do I hear eleven, one, three? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we also have one clarification to D four, which has already been pulled.
Oh, Galt Public?
No.
Oh.
Consent.
Public comment?
Under Government Code, Section five four nine five four point three, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheets to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Yeah.
I would like to go first, if that's okay with you guys. It's the event that's coming up tomorrow, and I would, I'll step over there to the podium. Counsel, ladies and gentlemen, I don't know if you know this, but I volunteer my time for, as all of us do, for many events in the community. I happen to be a volunteer for, uh, Parks and Rec Basketball, but for the Galt High School Warriors, uh, track. And we have an event tomorrow at three-thirty at the high school. And you know what? If you don't have a whole lot to do, or you can kind of move yourself around with all your projects, I think it would be just great if some of us could make it there and just move these kids along. We have the potential of these athletes, I'm telling you. They are fantastic, as you can tell in my voice. I'm, I'm very proud to be a parent and be one of their coaches. And I figure by the end of the year, they'll have me fully trained. But, you know, if you can, it's, uh, it's, uh, tomorrow at three-thirty at the Galt High School, uh, they'll be playing, or they'll be competing against, uh, Vista Del Lago. And I think it's gonna be great. I'd like for you to look at some of the things that these kids are doing, the throwers, the, uh, what they've done with the shot put and the discus ring. They have given their all for this, so just come down for a few minutes. Thank you. And thanks for letting me go first.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton.
Um, Benny Cordida?
Yeah?
If I said it wrong, I apologize.
Hello. Um, there's just a couple of things I wanted to say. Uh, I wanted to say thank you to a couple of the clubs you do need, um, money for me to go to the Sacramento Mandarin, um, D.C.I., Drum Corps Internationals. And basically what Drum Corps Internationals, if you've ever been to high school, would everybody have? And you see field shows, it's twice as big, with members over a hundred and fifty. And basically, we perform for ten minutes straight on the university field. And we travel over America, and then we ended, we end up in Indiana in August. And the people are, the clubs that I'd like to thank are the Seniors Club, the Valley Oaks Grange, Sunrise Rotary Club, After Rotary Club. And the people I'd like to thank is Vice Mayor Payne, Voice Jeffries, and Parker Reilly. Thank you.
Hey, Benny, where you, uh, where you gonna end up in Indiana? Is that Indiana University by chance?
Um, yes.
It is? Good university. All right. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Benny, before you leave, I just want to say, on behalf of the city of Galt, we are so proud of you and wish you good luck and, uh, know you do well.
Thank you.
Al Baldwin?
Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt, community of character. And, um, I'll tell you, I've got two things to do tonight, and I'm gonna need your cooperation. I've been instructed to do this, okay? So first of all, I get to take your picture. Your laptops don't have to be closed completely, but down so it won't destroy your face and outlook. And I get to take your picture, 'cause you don't, something's gonna happen that you don't know about yet, maybe. So, uh, if you could, just pull your laptop down, you know, a little bit.
I would like you to remove your glasses and your water bottles, too, please. He didn't dare tell you that.
And if you can take your shirts off.
Oh!
Can you, can you guys just a little? Appreciate it. Yeah, I'm gonna take a couple of them, but I wanna make sure that, you know, we're getting the best we can get. Now, there's a water bottle right there. Can you pull that one back? There's a water bottle.
It's sticky, Al.
Well, I'm sorry. I, you know, I just.
Like Thanksgiving Day pictures.
Here we go. When I say three, one, two, three. I'm gonna take another one now, though. I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, that was a good one, huh? So, okay. We're gonna go one more. All right. One, two, three. Okay. Well, that was the one thing I wanted to do, and I appreciate your patience and understanding with that. And, uh, the second thing, I just wanted to know, is when the, or how is the A Street and C Street overcross coming and the progression on it? I'd just like to keep an update going with this thing. Is it within the next six months, one year, two years? I just would like to know if anyone can give you a little update on it, that's all. No? Okay.
I can, um, we're in the process right now of acquiring right-of-way on that. Um, design is ninety-five percent complete, and I, I believe we're looking to go out to bid on October of this year. Is that correct, Public Works?
Yes.
So that means, the groundbreaking will be?
Wow.
Approximately?
Uh, more than likely spring, whether spring is February, March, or April, it'll depend on the weather. We're also looking at the possibility of doing some pre-clearing projects this summer. And we're also looking at, uh, getting some stimulus money, which will help us do that. We anticipate bidding in October, November, maybe have the actual award in December. That's our construction, well underway by, I say, April.
April of next year?
Next year. Right.
Okay, great. Hey, appreciate all the information, and I'm sure everyone else does, too. Thank you for the pictures.
You bet. Thank you, sir.
John? Excuse me, John Slaughterback?
Speaking of stimulus money, while he's coming up, at our board meeting at Secog last week, we approved hundreds of thousands of dollars that will be coming to Galt for a variety of improvements. And Greg will get the full list of the programs, but again, thanks to Greg and his staff for getting the, the materials into Secog. And, uh, like I say, Thursday, we, we made the final approvals, and, and Galt will farewell.
Uh, John Slaughterback, and I reside in the city of Galt. About, I come to council, and sometimes I get a little upset, and, uh, and, uh, I say maybe a little more than what I should, and maybe I don't say enough of what I should say. Uh, it's, it's against my personalities to come up here. It's not my personality to come up here and raise hell, but sometimes I don't agree with the way this city's going, and I feel like I have to, to speak up and say something. About two years ago, staff came to council recommending SCEDIA, I guess that's the way you pronounce it, an advanced system of instrumentation that would tell us in advance of water and sewer problems. Cost was a half a million dollars. August of last year, two thousand and eight, the city had a couple of sewer spills on F Street. It resulted in flooding in Ollie, Duplex, thus forcing families into hotels and all, and, and so on. The sewer system backed up more than once in areas of Oak Avenue and Palin Avenue, causing raw sewage to pour out of the main at, uh, two fifty-four Palin Avenue into a storm drain. Ted Anderson, I'd like to pose this question to you. How much did this sewer spill cost the citizens of Galt? What caused the problem? Wouldn't, and wouldn't this be a good example of employee evaluation? And was anybody reprimanded? I'll repeat that. What happened? How much did it cost the citizens of Galt? Was anybody reprimanded for this spill? And, and mainly, I'd like to know what it cost the citizens of Galt for this. There was, uh, I understand that the citizens, uh, some of the citizens in that mess was put up in hotels, and we had to pay them off. It's, it must be over by now. That was eight months ago. What, uh?
Well, I have no idea what spill you're talking about.
Sewer spill.
Yeah, but we have, we have more than one sewer spill in a year. Can you give me a date, time, and a place, and we can research?
August, two thousand and eight.
I, well, where was it? What was the address? Who was involved?
You know, you're making it rough, you know? I, I, I didn't come in here to argue about anything. I wanted some information, and you're trying to void my information.
John, would you let me speak? You asked me, and let me please respond. Most sewer spills are, are acts of God. We don't know what caused them until we go in there and actually check. And, uh, I, uh, we wouldn't reprimand for someone, and someone unless they had done something to cause it. And if you, uh, give me the address and the date, I will go and do the research, but I have absolutely no idea what spill you're talking about.
We had people in council here complaining about it, uh, uh, and...
Did you have any information on it that we can figure out so that we can give you that information?
Yeah. Does anybody here know anything about this sewer spill?
No, I don't. But how about this, as a compromise? Because, yeah, I, I think you guys are...
I'm sorry, nothing to interrupt, but...
Let me, let me just finish, please.
Go ahead.
If you would, and then...
Go ahead.
What I would like for Ted is to direct staff to answer the questions. I, you repeated them twice, so, and we've got it written down. And John, usually you're real good about, you know, giving the questions to us, so make, to make sure that staff will respond back to you. And then, John...
Okay. Well, I'd like the citizens to hear it, too. I'd like for them to hear what, what it costs for, for some of these sewer spills that, that, you know, that, that they know about. Uh, this affects our sewer rates and water rates. Uh, well, not water rates, in this case it'd be sewer rates, but it affects our sewer rates, and we're talking about increasing sewer rates.
Mr. Slaughterback, real quick, uh, you're talking about sewer spill, but are you really talking about a backup of the sewer system into a comp, uh, uh, apartment or a duplex? Is that what you're talking about? Okay, an apartment, or maybe it was a duplex, as I recall. Um, Ted, did we not have a duplex where there's a backup? We had to put some citizens up? And I believe it was handled, maybe perhaps through the insurance?
Well, I, I think that there was a item came before the council, and we'll ask staff if they have any idea of the address and what John's talking about.
How many people, how many backups have we had in the last year where we've had to put people up in apartments? I guess should be my question first.
I think it's the one that you're referring to, with, there was a duplex.
Right.
That, um, there was a sewer backup. And again, that did, was handled through NCCSIF through our liability, um, third-party administrator.
Okay. So, all right, so, to answer Mr. Slaughterback's question, we did have one in particular, and I believe this is maybe the one he's talking about. Are there any other backups that where we had to address and put, address an issue where we had to put somebody up in a hotel in the last year other than that one?
Not in the last year.
Mr. Slaughterback, was that within the last year that you were referencing? I believe it was just...
About eight months ago was the one.
Well, if you remember what the settlement was on the issue in regards to the thing?
No, I'd have to go back and see what the overall cost was.
The Roberts property.
Okay.
That's the property.
Okay, I'd like to, to switch then, and maybe I can find that information out. But I'd like to say, too, that, that, uh, this meeting tonight, for, for what we have it for, to me is out of line. I don't understand having this here. A lot of the public, I don't, public, I don't think is aware of, of what you have planned here tonight on these, uh, 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 salary increases. It seems like the wrong time to do it. Uh, I haven't even had a good chance to look through it myself to know what you're, you know? And at this time of the economy and all, I really don't understand why you've got it on the agenda tonight. It shouldn't be here. Um, if I see something wrong, if I have to, if, if I see something past here tonight, if I have to, I'll go take an ad out in the paper criticizing this city management for the way it's doing and whoever votes for it. So be careful of what you do tonight. I'm not very happy with the, the city's, uh, way it's being managed.
Thank you, Mr. Slaughterback.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
And Dick Smith?
My name is Dick Smith. Tonight, I'd like to talk about something a little bit lighter. Last Thursday, I attended a mayor's development program on March nineteenth. And I wanna read a report that I put together here, along with several other people. And the only comment I would like to make before I get started is I can't understand how in the world that Al Baldwin never showed up at this meeting. But I understand because he had to work that day. So, Al, I'm surprised you didn't show up. Any rate, let me read my report. I want to acknowledge and commend Mayor Shelton and Vice Mayor Payne for sponsoring and hosting the mayor's development forum held at City Hall on March nineteenth. This standing-room-only event was attended by an overflow crowd of businessmen, women, developers, building industry officials, landowners, and concerned citizens. Unfortunately, um, the only two concerned citizens there were myself and Orville Fletcher. It was inspiring to witness an outpouring of community and local business people who are generally concerned about the past business climate in the city and who are obviously interested and see what changes the city is going to be offering. Mr. Dennis Rogers from the Building Industry Association stated clearly when he said, "The building industry has written off Galt as a community that does not welcome or support development." He said, "This forum was an eye-opening and encouraging experience." This is great. The message that Mayor Shelton, Vice Mayor Payne, and Assistant City Manager Berman gave was clear that the city wants development and is willing to partner with development community to make this happen. Jason Berman and Kirk Campion presented an overview of ongoing projects and reported the general plan will be completed in April and that the C Street interchange will be under construction within the year. As a matter of fact, I got a call here today from Kirk. He's offered me a copy of the general plan, and I appreciate that. Not all funds are available for the interchange because of lack of impact fee revenue. But Jason feels the funds can be borrowed until fee revenues can be replenished within the growth. The city is also studying the improvements to the Twin Cities interchange. You introduced our new building official, Harry Hinton, who came to our city from the city of Paterson. We are encouraged to hear Hinton report on innovative and proactive methods he wants to implement to streamline the building permitting process. This is really important. When you opened the meeting for comments, Mr. Mayor, suggestions and questions, the response was, were clear. This is the downer. Why did it take the city six years to complete a general plan? It's time to get it done. Well, obviously, it's coming out now. The city needs to expand its sphere of influence to cover new development north of Twin Cities Road, and this is something we put in from Protect Galt's Future. I want to point out that by including the Delta Green Senior Project and the sewer expansion, the requirements of LAFCO and SB three seventy-five for sustainability and job housing balance will be met. This is really important. I have attached an exhibit D that demonstrates this point. I think our clerk has that. The city cannot hope to generate commercial business in the city without new cool rooftops first. Again, I understand that the Delta Green Senior Project will provide the housing base to support the planned commercial development north of Twin Cities Road. The city needs to implement an impact deferral program such as, uh, at Rancho Cordova, to help stimulate the commercial and residential development. The city needs to reevaluate its impact fee program and look to reducing fees as much as possible to create affordability within the city. The city needs to reevaluate standards that are often imposed without consideration as to cost applicability. City council members need to think independently and question staff and consultant input. There are many solutions available to solve this city's complex problems, and you should seek out other ideas and not always accept what is presented to you without question. Again, I want to thank you for holding this forum. We look forward to continuing this dialogue and involving the community in the process. My final comment is, I would like to see more publicity about this so that concerned citizens can attend future forums like this. Thank you very much for what you did.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Uh, before we move to consent, I would like to defer one item over to the city manager for a special presentation. Knock the dust off.
Mr. Mayor, I'd ask that Lauren J. Catalico, the Chief of Police, come and stand with me.
It doesn't look like, it looked like he was surprised as the rest of us.
He should be. In our line of business, sometimes, uh, education, uh, it's, uh, put on the side. You get too busy in the fight and whatever else. But, uh, Lauren is an example of a public servant who not only does his job, but has stayed in trying to improve himself on a regular basis. There's, uh, some special certificates that go with, uh, police and police chiefs who continue to further their education. One of them is a management certificate award requirement, which Lauren has already completed. There's another one called an executive certificate award requirement. Let me just state the six things that has to happen in order for him to receive that. The applicant for the award of an exec, executive certificate shall satisfy the requirements in the regulation above of nine oh seven oh, which is to receive the management certificate first. Number two is to possess or be eligible to possess an advanced certificate. Uh, third is to complete a minimum of sixty semester hours. The management one above it also required sixty semester hours, so between the two of them, that's a hundred and twenty semester hours. Uh, successfully complete a post-certified executive development course, serve a minimum of two years as a permanent department head in the current employing agency, or serve an aggregate of six years in law enforcement, with at least two years as department head of the agency, to receive all three certificates, supervisory, management, and executive. I don't know the total percentage of, uh, police chiefs or police individuals who receive all three certificates, but I would think that it was probably in the low five or ten percent. Lauren J. Catalico has completed all three, and we'd like to, uh, give him this award for the executive certificate, the commission on peace officer standards and training, and through the State California Department of Justice.
Oh, wait a minute. Need you to look pretty.
Congratulations, chief.
Okay. Now, we'll move to the consent agenda, calendar, and I'll ask, it's pretty extensive, Liz, would you mind reading it, please?
Sure. Um, I'll just read the subject matters.
Sure.
Uh, under consent, item number one, wastewater treatment plant tertiary improvement project. Number two, ADA sidewalk economic stimulus project. Number three, Central Galt Interchange Funding. Number four, which was pulled and will be discussed, new transit services agreement for South County Transit Link. Number five, which was pulled for discussion, approval of GPSU memorandum of understanding. Number six, which was pulled for discussion, approval of two-point-five percent cost of living adjustment, COLA, to include all unrepresented employees in the positions designated as non-sworn mid-management and professional and confidential effective January, January one, two thousand and nine. Number seven? Which was pulled for discussion, approval of salary ranges for department head positions. Number eight, return to work policy. Number nine, which was pulled for discussion, Galt Festival two thousand and nine. Number ten, which was pulled for discussion, Fourteenth Annual Galt Strawberry Festival. And number eleven, Certified Farmer's Market.
Okay. So, let's see. I got this in order. How about we take them numerically the way they were pulled? Is that okay with council?
That'll work.
Okay, so, number four? You said okay?
Uh, I'm gonna read something from this one regarding the SDT link. Uh, on page three, uh, it says, "Due to the elimination of the fixed routes and review of actual ridership, city and county staff are proposing a sixty-forty city-county split for the duration of the TSA." Uh, my main question on that is, I've had a lot of comments, as you know, I think I've shared them with you, that, uh, when we did away with the fixed routes, it's been, um, very difficult for some of the senior citizens to afford the new dollar ride fees, which are, I believe, a dollar seventy-five each way. And before, when we had the fixed routes, it was fifty cents for, uh, senior citizens. Um, we do have a program at Chabola Center, uh, it's the senior nutrition, that, um, some of those people are now unable to, to benefit from that program because they can't afford the transportation, which a dollar seventy-five two ways is over three dollars. Uh, so they're missing out on that very important part of what we're trying to provide for our senior citizens. Now, I don't know if there's any way that we can, um, um, do something about that, but before I, I voted on this, I wanted to ask, is there any consideration or any plan that we could work out? And if so, do we, can we go ahead and approve this with the hope that we could address that need, or would this eliminate it?
I appreciate your questions. Um, the agreement we're fully denied is the administration agreement between the city and the county. It really is totally independent of the fares. So, uh, I would tell, we have been speaking with the county, with, with the provider, and we are willing to explore the various possible ways we could reduce, uh, those fares. When we, we had to switch off from the fixed route because we were not meeting our farebox revenues, and yes, the fee for a fifty-cent ride on a fixed route basis moved up to a discounted dollar seventy-five. It's, uh, more than that for the general public. It's two fifty. That's necessary in order to meet our, the federal and state guidelines for the transit. Uh, I do understand the concern if the bus is going from one location, whether it picks up one person or ten people, it's going to the same spot. But you don't buy airline tickets because the planes go on there and let somebody else buy the ticket, and everybody else rides for free. We're trying to work out some compromise. Um, we've talked with the provider, and there is no regular scheduled need, they're not getting five or six or ten seniors that all want to go at the same... getting five or six or ten seniors that all want to go at the same time. A couple here, a couple there, and so we can get organized, then have a guaranteed group that we could look at reducing a rate there. Any reduction in rate for the seniors, though, would be an offsetting increase for the general public because of the need to meet a minimum farebox ratios. Federal guidelines require a 20% farebox recovery, that means twenty cents of the dollar we collect in fare versus a dollar of what an actual cost. We subsidize the rest of that. Under the old fixed route, we were barely collecting six percent. So, we were way under and jeopardized of losing all the federal funding, or having to supplement that with the general fund. We are talking with the county and the provider to see if there are things we can do, maybe having a select fixed route. We're going to explore those possibilities. All the counties on board, we just have to work with the various agencies and the senior centers to see if we can somehow platoon those trips and get them all to go on a certain day. Maybe there's something we can do as far as a discounted there. We could look at a overall senior discount, just give seniors and students and disabled a bigger discount, not just for seniors. Could be very problematic because if it's seniors just in the city or seniors out somewhere else, we don't charge differences for the length of the trip. And so, everything we do opens up a whole bunch of other problems, which is why typically for a city our size, there are no variations, it is a fixed cost. But it's certainly, we are something we're willing to look into, we want to try to serve the seniors, and this agreement really solidifies the city-county partnership to be together in serving that purpose.
Okay. Thank you.
On the South County Transit, on the fixed routes, as I recall, they had monthly passes, usually bought at a discount, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. On the dollar ride, do they also have a fixed rate for people who use it frequently, where they can get a reduced charge?
It is possible. One thing we are looking at is we could have a coupon book where it would be good for so many rides, or you could have a monthly pass that would be good for a minimum ride.
Because I think this would be a good, excellent alternative for the frequent riders. That would be something most certainly I would like to pursue myself.
That is something we're working with the county on as far as the number of options, yes.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree, because we have several individuals that use it like three times or every day, five days a week.
Yes.
You know, to even go to the, to go to the doctor or something.
That would be good, okay.
By comparison, we did check with some other cities, we want to know how we compare. We're at a dollar seventy-five other rates for fixed routes, I'm sorry, for dollar ride, we're from a dollar to $2.50, and that is already discounted over the general public for their rides. So, the seniors are already receiving a discount. One thing, I also wanted to have this pulled out the consent calendar, I've included memo in each of your packets. After we published the agenda reports, we read, we read through the agreement and decided a clarification was necessary in order to further define the limitation on the county's share or county's admin cost. One of the changes in this agreement is the city is now providing the fuel. So, we're buying fuel at a wholesale price as opposed to buying it at full retail price. We're saving both that markup and the excise tax. So, we had to change the agreement, so we're now charging the county back for their share of the fuel cost. They've limit their administration costs based on the total operating cost. We want to make sure they weren't marking up their admin costs on the cost of the fuel. So, I've given you, show that the change in the agreement is there, basically just clarifies how we're going to calculate that maximum admin cost by the county. So, if you approve it, we'll incorporate this into the final agreement.
Okay, so with that, then, to approve this, this request, would we need to make special reference to this change?
Right.
Or?
Section 3.1.
I don't believe so. We're asking the council authorize the city manager to actually execute the final agreement, and I believe this is a very minor adjustment, and we would just incorporate it into the final agreement. I'm also due to, any input from Steve.
You could identify it in the motion, though, that it has been amended and approved by the mayor.
Okay, I would like to go ahead then and move to approve this with the amendment.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? None? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Passed. Okay, next item is number five.
I asked this to be pulled, and it's along with six, so I'll discuss both of them as we talk. I know this in the past, maybe this is what we've done, is we place these type of issues as far as salary increases and that on the consent calendar. I'm not sure why we put it on tonight's meeting, because tonight wasn't a regularly scheduled meeting, and I, for clearance, for transparency purposes, I think it's really important that we show the public that, you know, what we're doing, and if we're spending the public's money, they need to know about it, it needs to be out there for them. My issue is not with our staff in any way, shape, form, or another. I wouldn't replace our staff with anybody. I think we've got the most outstanding workers, the most qualified individuals. If these were, under normal circumstances, during normal times, my issue with this wouldn't, I wouldn't have an issue with this. But unfortunately for us, these aren't normal times. I mean, we're dealing with some major issues in the economy. I mean, we've got foreclosures, we've got people losing their homes, we've got people losing their jobs, we've got people taking pay cuts. Everybody in our community is sharing in the downsizing of this economy, and we all need to share in this, in my opinion, and that means making sacrifices. I don't agree with either one of these, I think I've been pretty vocal about it. I think that if there's ever been a time when we needed to tighten our belt and when we needed to make these type of decisions, and it's not a popular, and it's now. So, before I go any further, what I have to say, I would like to get a staff report on each one of these so we can discuss it, and I think it's important that the public know how much it is we're spending, what it's going to cost in its totality. It's not a one-time cost, it's an ongoing cost. In light of current events where, you know, it was, you know, where, you know, it was suggested that we would raise our utility bills, and when we're looking to raise possibly other fees, whether it be parks and wrecks on the, on, you know, what we're charging, our kids to play sports, this is a tough economy, and I think we need to be open about what we're doing, and I'd like to know exactly what it is, how much we're spending, if staff can provide that to us. I think it's important.
There are staff reports in here, there's one for each one of them. If you have any additional questions, Paula can answer it.
Okay.
Just for the general public, though, a consent agenda is not an agenda to hide anything. The reports are the same, and it is up to the council, they can remove it for general comment at any time. In the past, this has been a standard procedure. If council wishes to change it, we're more than happy to do so.
Well, how about we do this? I'd like to ask if Paula Wood can come back in the next meeting with a full report as to what it's going to cost as a breakdown of fees, et cetera, ongoingly, on each one of the subject matters, and that would give time for the community to be a little bit more involved and be a little more informed, as well as provide as a report on that. If nobody objects to that, that's what I prefer to see at this point, instead of perhaps discussing it here tonight, and if there would be any other issue.
Any other comments? We have a couple of people that want to speak about it, too.
Okay. All right. Let's hear from the public, then.
And if I would have saw it ahead of time, I would have reminded us that we have somebody from the public.
Okay.
John Sotterbeck?
John, did you still want to speak on it?
Um, Rick Walters?
My name is Vic Walters, and I live in the city of Galt. About a month ago, Mr. Anderson made a statement that in the 1990s, the utilities weren't increased, so I went back over my utilities in the 1990s, and guess what? There were increases. 1992 rate increase, 1993 rate increase, 1994 rate increase, 1997 rate increase, 1999 rate increase. These rate increases indicated an increase of 20% for the 1990s. Now, why would some of our community and city staff suggest that there were no increases to our utilities in the 1990s? What is their motivation for such a remark, and why has it been promoted as the truth? I can only assume that influential members of our community want a larger city government, which in turn helps landowners and government workers with higher wages and more residential development. We need to ask this one question. Are we a government of the city, by the city, for the city? Or are we a government of the people, by the people, for the people? We can't have it both ways. When we come before you and express our concerns of rising fees and a larger city government, we expect you to take this matter seriously. We do not expect you to dismiss our complaints and arguments as just another bad day at work or an unjustly assault on this council or city staff. There is no correct way to stop fee hikes in a larger city government without hurting somebody's feelings, especially when those in charge don't want to listen to what we have to say. The question then becomes, where are we going to get the money necessary to run these facilities if we don't raise fees? Well, we have a budget, and you need to stick to it, just like we do in our own home budget. Cut back on the percentage of capital improvement projects. Freeze wage increases for city employees until growth pays for the increases. Freeze all staff wages, compensation, and bracket increases until growth pays for the increases. I want you to remember one thing, that you've already increased the sewer and water payroll by $1 million since 2001. It's $1 million more you're repaying those people. You have also transferred $450,000 out of the sewer fund for other city wages. You have also transferred $209,000 out of the sewer upgrade fund to pay for city wages. I'm upset with that one, that was supposed to be a special fund. In my opinion, this practice needs to stop. Now, let's look at why city employees need more money. I did some computations and took five brackets of the city budget, and the total compensation package for city employees is approximately $47 an hour. In my opinion, there should be no cost of living raised this year. This $47 an hour package is more than enough for an individual to survive this climate of financial uncertainty. Now, look at what the average senior citizen on social security makes on his total compensation package, $7 an hour. So, if I have this correct, you want the $7 an hour homeowner to pay the $47 an hour city worker more money because his healthcare costs and retirement costs keep going up? Doesn't make sense. And then you pass these costs along to the ratepayer as increases to our sewer and water fees. This is outrageous. When I was working four years ago, my healthcare cost that I paid for my wife and myself, I paid $827 a month out of my own pocket. That's the real world. That's not the world that you live in. That's my world when I lived in it. Who's going to pay for our healthcare and retirement costs? This city? I don't think so. You forget that homeowners do not have the ability to pass along these increases, which puts them into further financial trouble. I also hope that a decision has not already been made on this matter of increases, because if it has-
Mr. Walters?
-then the public has been blindsided-
Thank you for the comment.
...in worse ways, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Walters.
Any further comments? Any further discussion or comments from council?
No.
On this item, I'm sorry.
Your six and seven, would you like to speak?
Yeah, we're doing five and six, so if you'd like, come on up.
Dan Jimenez, and I live in the city. On item six and seven, I can't believe this whole proposal was going to be presented here tonight. Let me review some of the proposals that I've heard come before this council in just the last few months. Proposals that fly in the face of common sense and respect of the citizens, a lack of respect for the citizens in this town. Water meters. The Public Works Director wanted every homeowner to pay the same rate, no matter if they were meter-ready, semi-meter-ready, not meter-ready at all, or if they were on meters already. This would have put an unjust burden on everyone, whether they deserved it or not. Not a good proposal. The other one, utility increases of 4.1%. This proposal was sent back for review. We are still waiting to hear if the citizens are going to get any relief from this proposal. We haven't heard anything, and there's a lot of people, they were here that night, that just couldn't afford those increases. And before the dust even got settled on any of those issues, the city manager now proposes wage increases for city employees and new salary ranges for department heads. And strategically, put it on an agenda on an off-night council meeting. I don't understand why. This is not a question if city employees deserve increases or not. It's a question of the tough economic times we are, we are in right now. Cities, all around us, they're freezing wages, laying off city employees, or having them take time off without any pay. On top of that, the revenues that come into this city are currently lower than previous years. How on earth can wage increases be justified at this time? A 2.5% increase may not seem like a lot. However, when you add up all the benefits that go along with it, that percentage goes up even higher. To be clear, I want to be clear on this. I'm not saying that these employees are not worth what they are, but the timing just couldn't be worse. If this council approves more wage increases before it settles the utility increases, how well do you think it's going to sit with the people of this town once they hear about it? I wouldn't want to be at the end of that phone call. The people of this town want a council that has its feet squarely grounded to the needs of this community, and to say, "Sorry, not this time, Mr. Anderson." If we do not have such a council, then we have to remember that in November 2010, our voices need to be and will be heard. Now, I got this document, for lack of better terms, that came from Mr. Anderson to this council. I want to read this statement in here. "This agreement covers the period of January 1, 2009, through December 31, 2009. Attaches the previous MOU showing the proposed changes along with the final copy of the new MOU. The updated GPSU salary schedule is also included in this report, which reflects a 2.5 cost of living adjustment authorized by council in closed session on November 3, 2009." Am I reading this correct? This rate has already been passed? This has already been agreed to, to give them this? I want an answer, please.
It was discussed and voted on in closed session.
Mr. Jimenez, something that I think is getting lost in translation here is the fact that what you see before you, the agreement that you're reading, is the end of a negotiation process. So, what was voted on in closed session was an agreement that was presented to us on behalf of the employees' union. Do you understand what I'm saying? It's not like we're just going out and giving 2.5% to the employees. We needed to negotiate a contract.
Okay. In simpler terms, is this a done deal? Is this what they're going to get because you voted on it in closed session?
The agreement's been offered to the employees.
So, then, why was it even going to be put on an agenda for you guys to discuss it? That seems like, that's a bunch of hooey that you're putting over the citizens of this town, where you say, "This is a subject matter for the, on the agenda," and that you're going to review it and make a, a recommendation on it, when the recommendation's already done. Why are you doing that to us?
Let me refer over to our attorney. Let me refer over to our attorney. I think, Andrew, you tried to answer it the best you could, so if you would say.
Just want to point out that whenever the city is involved in labor negotiations, there's state law that governs that process. And what it provides is that the city needs to engage in negotiations with employees, and the way that offers are transmitted and received to and from the city council is through the negotiators. That information is brought to the council in closed session. They receive an update periodically on offers made by the bargaining unit, and they give negotiating instructions to the city negotiators. And that goes back and forth until an agreement is reached. Once that agreement is reached, then the final product comes before the full city council in open session for a vote. So that's what is before the council tonight. It is correct that in prior closed sessions, that the council authorized the offer of 2.5% cost of living increase, and that was made to the bargaining unit who has accepted that offer. So that's the process. Does that answer your question?
That answers my questions in terms of how the negotiations were done, and my only concern is that it seems like a camouflage issue to the citizens of this town where you put it on an agenda and make it seem like you're going to vote on it when it's already a done deal. I understand that all the formalities of the negotiation process and what you have to go through, but don't put it on an agenda like you're going to vote on it when it's a done deal. It's wrong, you guys.
Just one more point, Mr. Jimenez. Mr. Rudolph, if I'm correct, the council still has the authority tonight to not approve this agreement, but what would happen is our employees would be working without a contract. So we do have the authority, Mr. Jimenez, to not approve the agreement tonight.
I don't have much faith in you guys, let me tell you that right now.
I think one of the real issues here that Mr. Jimenez has, and I happen to have a mutual agreement with, is that the disclosure, the transparency, the upfront honesty about what's going on, yes, this has been on the consent calendar in the past, but this is no way to do business, and this is no way to communicate with the community. If this is something that we truly believe in, and we're passionate about giving to our staff, then by God, we should be open and upfront about it. I don't think there's anything unreasonable about what he's asking. What I'm asking is simply this, is that a couple of things. First and foremost, that in the future, that we should consider this as not being under the consent calendar, but being agendized. I think that there should be a presentation, and there should be an open vote, other than what we do behind closed doors, so the public knows how we feel. The fact that we put this under a consent calendar, and we all just vote yes, 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 there's several items on that consent calendar, and we may or may not approve with all of them. So, and yes, we can pull them off, but I think the issue here is transparency. People have a right to know where their money's going. I don't believe people want to be caught up into a tax-and-spend council in the hardest of times, so I'm asking that this council defer this off to the next council meeting, where we can have a presentation, people know exactly what we're spending, how we're spending it, and then we do an open vote so that people know exactly what our positions are. And I don't think that's unreasonable.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification. To the extent that there is any implication that this labor negotiation process was not conducted in accordance with law, I want to dissuade the audience and anyone listening from that conclusion. The manner in which offers were brought to the city council in closed session, the manner in which the council gave direction in closed session, was handled as allowed by law. The city council is allowed to meet in closed session, to provide directions to its labor negotiators, which it did do, and this was handled in the way that all labor negotiations are customarily handled within this state for public employee unions. This agreement is before the council tonight for its consideration. If the council does not desire to approve it, then there will not be an approved MOU, notwithstanding any actions or directions the council gave to its negotiators in closed session.
Any other comments from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, city manager.
We still have people in the audience to speak.
I think there needs to be a little bit of education also. My name's personally been brought up as if I've done something and I shouldn't do it. The public needs to understand that by law, I am the representative for those individuals who do not have a union. Also, I have a team of individuals who works with GPSU. In my career, in 32 years, I've never approved a raise. I've never been the one that's gone and done it. It's always been by council. What we do is we come and we negotiate with the union or with the unrepresented. We take a proposal to the council, and the council decides whether they will or won't approve it. In the last three or four years, the unrepresented in GPSU has been going through a process to try and get an enhanced retirement benefit. It was first at 2.7, and then it was 2.5. This has been about a three- or four-year process. These individuals that are looking forward to this 2.5 increase have had no cost of living and no increase since '07, whereas other unions, which were the police and the dispatchers, have had almost four years of almost 19.5% increase through cost of living. There's an equity issue that this council needs to deal with, and the public needs to understand. Another thing is, is that no raise affects a utility except those individuals that work in the utility. Anyone that works in the general fund does not affect the utility raise. But this proposal was done and followed as every one that I've done since I've been here. If the council wishes to change the process, we need to do it for every increase and every cost of living. And so if that's what the council wishes to do, they can do so.
Well, before we get into more discussion, do we want to hear what the rest of the citizens have to say? Because I think there's somebody else who hasn't spoken.
Well, I wasn't planning on opening it up. We had comments already. I will, well, I meant, I will turn it over to the four council members, because we've already done this, and, you know, we have an MOU, we have contractual agreement, and I've already made up my mind. And Don, we already discussed this in a closed meeting on what we're going to do, and we all know what your opinion was at that time. So, if, I'm going to turn it over to the four council members. You four decide if you want to open this up. You already know what my vote is. No, we need to move on. I know you do, but hold on, hold on. I will allow the four council members to decide. I will not decide. What's your pleasure?
I personally would like to wait to hear what the rest of the individuals, where you asked for, you concluded me so.
I'm fine with it.
You're fine either way.
I'm fine with letting Mr. Stripling.
Okay.
I am too, and I was thinking that he had turned in, did you turn in a sheet? It just, it just thought, yeah.
Well, if we missed you, I apologize.
I do have, let me just clarify this. I do have a sheet from New Jersey. It is on the wastewater treatment plant, or the, um, okay, I'm sorry then.
Darrell?
Just come on in. You're fine.
Okay, fine.
Before this clock starts, I'd like to ask the attorney one question that way that's not working on my time. Is this, what you're saying, that this raise and stuff is not a done deal yet? Would you please?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to know. Now, we can start my clock.
We'll give you a-
My name is Jerry Stripling. I live in County Gulf. I've lived in Gulf here for 62 years. In our livestock industry, we've taken probably close to a 50% hit. We have no guarantees what our paycheck's going to be. We have no 2.5 guarantees. I don't even have a health policy. If I die, they get a tobacco and bury me. The City of Gulf has a lot more opportunities than the public does. This rate increase should never happen. It should be frozen due to a bad economy. You've had your 401s become 201s, everything else. We have a president right now is writing checks that we're going to have a hard time cashing. The City of Gulf might be in good shape right now, but you better save your money, because if this thing goes further, the City of Gulf will be in big trouble. This 2.5 deal, as far as I'm concerned, should be held over for at least a year. We should take a look at things. The employees, the staff members, and everybody at Gulf ought to be looking at one thing: be glad you got a job. There's a lot of people out here that don't have a job, and they can't afford your increases. You're going to come in with all your sewer and water increases, your rate increases and everything else, and put more pressure on them, and then take some of that money just to give the 2.5 to somebody else that has a job? Like I said, they ought to be happy they have a job. We have a world economy that might not pull out of this for quite a while. We got, people want to make big plans for putting houses all over the west side of Gulf, out in nature conservatory ground, or not nature conservatory ground, the ground back of the sewer plant. That may not happen. It might be a long time before this thing straightens out. We've got foreclosures all over the town. This thing here needs to be stopped right now. You people need to look at it. You guys might have a guarantee on your wages, but there's a lot of them out here don't. And I'm one of them. This should have been brought up before the public. The public should say what they want to pay the City of Gulf employees, and the staff, and the bosses, all of them. I'm totally against it. I think you ought to prolong this thing for a year and take another look at it next year. I'm sorry, as Seth said up here, a little bit irate, but I thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, we still have item number five and number six before us. Any other comments, or is there a motion?
I would just like to make a quick comment, and I think we've tried to make it clear, but maybe not. To me, it is not just a simple increase of salaries. From my side of the table, and I'm as conservative as the next person, I think what the city manager tried to explain was, for some time, the employees have been working with us when they would have already gotten this increase, but we thought we had a plan that would work better for both of us. But unfortunately, that didn't work. Had we not even tried that, I would guess they would already have this increase. And I don't know, you know, how to explain it any clearer, other than, I think we owe the staff the feeling that they can trust us, that we're not going to renig on our obligation to them as well. So I just wanted to put that out so you know where we're coming from. If I had promised to pay you X number of dollars two years ago that I would pay it today, I would still be obligated to pay that today, even though, you know, my husband may be laid off from work. I would still have that obligation. And so, like I said, I'm as conservative as anyone, and you'll probably hear it from me on the next item, but I have to, I have to say that I have to feel like our staff can have trust in us.
Want to say something?
Yeah, I think the public, just for the public's knowledge, I think they need to know something else, and that is that when we did the budget presentation in February, just after that meeting, my staff sat and discussed the issues that are going on. We've been saving and cutting back since October of last year, and I think that's why we're sitting in as good a shape as we are. But every department head took a vote, and the department heads will not receive anything. They just said that we will do nothing, and we will wait for a year. The year that they're talking about is exactly the year that they're, so I want them to understand that no one on the management level with the department heads will receive anything, and that the people that we're talking about have had nothing since '07. And as Councilwoman Payne had indicated, if we hadn't have been in negotiations, they would have received the same type of raises that the police and the dispatchers received on a regular basis over that period of time, which would have been probably three or four increases. So the 2.5 as an amount based upon three years' worth is not a very large number.
All right. Go ahead, Darrell. No, I'm going to let you go first, but when you're done, I have something to say.
Yeah, to the point Barbara made about good faith, which is what labor negotiations are all about, the core of labor negotiations is to negotiate in good faith. And multiple years ago, we met with the employees and attempted to do something that would save the city money, and CalPERS and some of the guidelines would not allow it to occur. But in working with the city, the employees agreed to forego any raises, any COLAs, anything at that time, in the sincere hope that both we and they would be able to do what we wanted to do with the CalPERS system, and that did not succeed. So when we began that negotiation, just as almost five years ago, when we negotiated with our police officers, we negotiated in good faith of what we believed it would take to hire and retain police officers, given the competitive market around us. And many of you probably remember how many officers both the cities of Citrus Heights and Elk Grove hired away from jurisdictions like ourselves, and we were one of the cities they hired people away from. So in the middle of that contract with the police officers, we had no more right either to go back and change what was negotiated. It's a labor contract, and it's, again, based on faith and labor negotiations that are done in an honest, forthright manner. So I would not be in favor of what we're proposing tonight had the three years that preceded this vote tonight not taken place, and had the employees not foregone the wages that they were willing to give up at that time. If we, in my opinion, if we now renig on, they did their part. They went out, they gave up the raises, they gave up the COLAs, as we partnered. If at the end of the process, we now say, "Well, you already lost that, and you're going to lose this also," why would they ever come to the table again and negotiate in good faith? Because they would not believe we had done the same. So that is why I would support what we're proposing tonight. What I have found interesting is about 12 years ago, before I was on the city council working in what I believed was economic development problems this city was facing, these are the things we were talking about that this city would face over time. And almost every speaker tonight has been the "I want no growth in my town" speaker. "I'm willing," they said, how many times have we heard it, both council members and many of you tonight? "I'm willing to pay the extra cost of keeping my town small." Well, this is what no growth looks like. So all of you who wanted this, you're here. This is what no growth looks like. This is, this is no growth, and all of us who are here are paying what it costs to still be here. And unfortunately, it has been made even worse by the fact that some people aren't here anymore because their homes have been foreclosed, and they now live somewhere else, and we aren't getting their property tax. So this is what this looks like. And I agree with the gentleman, we'll probably be here for a little bit. And I think, Mr. Walters, you said, "We'll wait until growth pays for this." So maybe now you want some growth to pay for it, but there's not going to be any growth for a little while. So our waste treatment plant, our parks, our water, what those cost is what we, the citizens who live in this town, are going to have to bear the burden of. Now, I still hope we get economic development on the 99 corridor. We're getting some on Twin Cities. We've had some people open up there recently. Our revenues actually are increasing even at this time, our sales tax revenues, but this is what the cost of running the City of Gulf costs. This is it. This is it.
Just a, a side note on what Kelsey McLaren had to say. It's really disappointing that we've turned this into a growth versus no growth debate, because really, it has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
No, it doesn't, thank you.
To be perfectly clear, because Mr. Walters or Mr. Jimenez doesn't support the Delta Greens project, it doesn't mean that they support zero growth for the city. And I, I really think that you've boxed them into a corner with that. And while I agree, agree with your, your stance on this position, and you know that I do, I just think you used a, a poor argument, because you really isolated myself from your, your point of view. I think it was a mistake.
My point was simply this, I don't know how we get off track on the issues. My issue is not with the closed session of negotiations, my issue is not with the staff. My issue is truly with the transparency of what we're doing here, and what needs to be disclosed and openly to the public. We're spending their tax dollars. Um, you're talking about obligations, it's only an obligation when you vote on it. When the final vote comes through, then it becomes an obligation. Up to that point, it's a negotiation. Uh, Paul, a quick question, when was the last time staff went without a raise? Part of 2007 is what I've been told.
Off the top of my head, I'd have to go back and research that.
Can you give me a guesstimation?
Two years before that? A couple of years before that?
No, it was more than a couple.
I, I don't know. Do you remember something from a meeting that you're recalling?
Yeah, I'm recalling, but I'm not gonna say anything. But let me just put it to you this way, we don't even have any facts in front of us, ladies and gentlemen. Okay? Don't you wanna know the facts? How long has it been since this staff has not had a raise? Where are, I'm very uncomfortable with the direction that this community's going in. I have to be upfront and honest with you. I want full disclosure. If I agree or disagree with something, I'm gonna tell you. You can agree or disagree with me on that issue nonetheless. We have no business voting on something if we don't have the facts in front of us. That's my opinion.
Let me give you the fact, the groups that we're talking about have not had an increase since oh seven.
Okay. Well, I can debate that with you, but you know what, Ted, here's the reality of life. And everybody up here has already indicated, everybody else in, in life is struggling right now. People are unemployed, people are losing their homes, and I understand that. How about sharing in the cause a little bit? That's what I'm saying. You know, that's all I'm asking for. If you disagree with me, at least be upfront about it. Tell the public how you feel about it. Support it if that's what you believe. I simply don't. I just want a little bit of transparency, that's all I'm asking for. And I think the public's entitled to it. And let me tell you something, if there's ever been a time for people to give up, or for us to sacrifice, now's the time. And if it's not now, then I don't know then whenever that would be. Then it would never be. A depression wouldn't do it then. That's all I can say.
I agree with him 100 percent. We need to be above board, and we need to give the facts. But one of the facts that he's missing is, is for three, for two and a half years, the money that these people would've gotten for a cost of living went into the reserve. That's a fact.
Well, I don't wanna get into debate it tonight, I'd just like to know where the, I could debate you on that issue, but I'm not gonna do it right now. I just wanna know if we're gonna-
Hang on, let me finish, Don. Now, if, if, if you were that concerned, then one of the issues is, is in January, when you had the cost of living for the police and the, and the dispatchers, you probably should've taken a look at it then. But you authorized a 4.18 cost of living increase in January.
The difference between them and currently is that contract was already written, and it was approved. That vote had already been done, and this vote hasn't been, that's the difference.
Well, there hasn't been a vote on this by the council.
Okay, well, my point is simply this, I would prefer to see it be put off. I'd like to see some facts put out, I'd like a presentation. I'd like full disclosure for the public's view to see. If you're not going to do that, okay, then don't, then at least call for a vote. I wanna know how people stand on this, and I think the public's entitled to know, one or the other.
Well, either way, we have two items, as I started to say several minutes ago. Is there a motion on the floor for item number five and number six? I don't know, but we need to do them separately?
Mr. Mayor, I'd recommend that you take a motion on it independently.
We'll take number five. Is there a motion on the floor, one way or the other, to approve it, move it along, bring it back, whatever?
I'd like to make a motion that we bring it back, uh, we have a presentation from staff, and then we take an open vote for the public. That's my motion.
There's a motion. What do you want in the presentation, so that we make sure we meet your needs?
Well, all I'm asking is that we show the staff what the raises are, the cost of it. It's an, it's gonna be an annual cost, what is it gonna be the first year? Maybe the next three years, what, cause the cost of it's gonna go up every year due to inflation, any way you look at it. But just, I would like-
Clarify though, Councilman Haynes, this is a one-year contract.
That's a technical-
Okay, well, then, then, okay, that's fine. Okay, then let's bring it back, let's at least, let's find out what it's costing us. When was the last time staff received a raise? Um, I, I think we just at least need to be out there and upfront about what we have, that's all.
Can I just ask a question? You're asked, you're saying the last time they received an increase?
Well, the last time, I'm sorry, Paul, you're, you're right, I apologize. The last time they went without an increase part of this, that's all.
Oh, okay, that's what I thought.
That's, that's what I meant to say, that's what I said earlier, but take it first.
And as far as being upfront, I just wanted you to realize that the three, there is a 3% salary increase that was approved in the budget this year. So this is not something that would be taken from any other funds, it's already in our budget. So I just wanted to let you know that we're not trying to, um, you know, not be upfront about something.
Right.
This is what we typically do, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, we, we budgeted money for our CIP programs, but we had to cut those out also because of the economy. So I understand the budgeting process, the money's there, it doesn't mean we have to use it. So I'll leave it in the hands of the rest.
So we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Okay, the motion is that you want to delay this action, and you want a presentation-
I would like, at least, I'd like to know the cost, or as much as staff can give us, on this issue, as far as what it's gonna cost us. It's gonna be a one-year contract, as you said. I'd like to know, the last time staff didn't have to go, they went without a raise, so we know what the duration was, and the impact is gonna be on the community, that's all. It, it, I'm not really asking for a lot, if you look at the totality of it. I'm just asking for some transparency, that's all.
I, I'm just trying to make sure that we get you what you're looking for. So I, I will support your request.
And is it just for this employee group, or do we wanna break it down to the entire, um, the employee group?
Well, I would suggest doing it for five, six, and even seven, if there's going to be any cost change or increase in cost to the community, I think we should have that out there for each one.
Let me ask the city attorney, because you said to take these one at a time, do we have to do this? Number five, number six, number seven?
I understand, I mean, I think-
Number seven yet?
Yeah, I think you called for a motion on D5. I believe that there's a, a motion by Councilmember Haynes to continue the matter. This is D5 only, with a second by Councilmember Claire.
You second it, okay.
Is your motion to continue it to the next meeting?
Preferably, yes, uh, the first week of, uh, April.
You know what meeting that is, right?
Well, what date does it land on? Uh, what, what is it now?
I believe-
General plan on, on the agenda that night, we also have the utility rate increases on the agenda that night. I have a fear that this is gonna turn into a five and a half hour long meeting, that people don't have an opportunity to make comments on these important issues.
Well, then, that's, why can't we do it the second meeting in April, then?
Well, then we're, we're pushing this contract back almost a month.
I think what's more important, pushing the contract back or full disclosure? I think that would be my question, that's a balancing act we have to decide on.
Well, Paul, you could probably tell us right now what this is gonna cost us for the year, because we've got it appropriated in the budget at 3.0 percent. We're less than that, so we know it's less than what we had in the budget. So can you-
It is, it is less than what we have in the budget, and, but we'd have to break it down, I mean, it's not all general fund money as well, so.
We apologize, uh, Inez, uh, asked to be excused because there was emergency, and I said, "Did you have anything on the chin?" And she said, "No," so I excused her. Inez would have those numbers, uh, if you wanna wait a little bit, we can go back in and interpolate some of the numbers from the budget and give you a rough estimate. We can probably get in the ballpark.
Can you get the information tonight, so we could possibly vote on it tonight?
And we can hold that item? Okay. So now we're at six.
I think we're on the same issue there.
Same issue.
Same issue, nothing's changed.
I know, I'm just going by what the, what the guidance was from the attorney, to take them separately.
Well, right now, we have a motion on five to continue the matter. So is the maker of the motion withdrawing the motion pending receipt of further information, or?
That's, uh, that's what I'm trying to-
Well, I think, here's the thing, is that you can come back tonight with the same information, but you're still not giving the rest of the community an opportunity to have a say-so, or to at least hear what's going on, and, and that still defeats the purpose. So I would still hold with what I stated earlier. I mean, I, I would still like to see held over, so that it's out there in a regular course meeting, so that people have a chance to, uh, be, contribute to it, or be a part of it. And listen, and, and be able to, uh, then, uh, or discuss it themselves openly in a session.
To, to that end, I would call for the question then, and, um, if the, if the motion fails, staff certainly can bring that information forward, and see if we wanna take action on it tonight. I would, however, say if we're gonna hold it over, Don, you've got a week to get with staff and be as briefed as you want on it, and then they can also make their presentation for the public as well.
I will make myself available anytime this week, uh, to go over this issue.
May I call the question on the motion?
Call for the vote?
No.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No. Okay, we'll go to number six.
I position the same on six as it was five. Well, first meeting in April, you okay with that?
No, I'm not, but because we're gonna be packed.
We're gonna be packed, but you know what, that means, there's that many more citizens who are gonna know about it, how's that? And, and I have no problem with that. So I know it's not a popular, uh, I know it's not a popular choice, but I appreciate Daryl's support on that issue, and, and, uh, Andrews, as far as, uh, holding it over, because I think it is important. Thank you.
So, number six.
I'd like to make a motion under number six, that we do the same as we did with five, we hold it over, give me a chance to talk with staff, get some questions and answers, come back in the next, uh, first meeting of April, and then, uh, disclose what we've, uh, what we're spending, and how we're doing it, and then, uh, uh, give people an opportunity to speak on it.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second?
Second, further discussion? Then, call for the vote?
No.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No. Okay, we're out to number seven. Barbara?
Okay, I pulled this because of, um, it states the salary ranges include five salary steps with a 5% differential between each sal, step. One of the things that's always bothered me is that we are, uh, projecting that we're gonna have the revenue to cover those, that 5%, whereas, for example, this year, we had to cut our budget 5%. So my concern about this is by setting, it's like we're predicting that we're going to have, uh, the funds to cover that. And I always feel like you need to look at your revenue source. Uh, and right now, our revenue source doesn't look too great for the future. So my concern about this is the fact that we have, uh, set step raises.
Add to that, but it doesn't really, this does not make a difference to any of the department head's salaries. It's basically taking them and putting them back into our matrix for our compensation plan.
Yeah, I understand.
So, okay, so that's how every other position within this-
And that wasn't anything I was in favor of anyway, so I'm just being consistent.
Okay.
Talked about support this, all I did was that.
You're talking about raising the salary ranges though, correct?
No.
Were you talking about-
Only placing them in, back in the ranges, there's not-
They're just being placed back into a salary matrix.
That's right, because we didn't get away with the bonuses.
Exactly, this does not affect anyone's salary.
There's nothing, you're just putting it in the matrix.
Nothing changes, other than converting them back to what, where they were prior to that?
Paula, let me ask you, is this part of when we had, we used, oh, I can think of that. We started the Pay for Performance, and that only lasted like, I don't know, it was eight or 10 months or something?
It was one full, it was for one full year.
It was for one full year.
And the part of that program is that we-
And when that went away, this is to bring the department head back into, cause they were left out with nothing.
The salary matrix, right, and it's really, again-
Paula, when were the salary ranges set, that we have in the salary matrix?
They were set during the, um, management compensation plan, known as Pay for Performance.
So this was 2006, 2007?
Um, actually, it was last year, 2008.
Yeah, it was a year ago.
My problem with setting the ranges right now, I mean, Ted has already alluded to the fact that our department heads have voluntarily not accepted any salary increases this year. So we're basically at a freeze right now for department heads. I, I think it would be better off, it would be better for the city to wait a year, come back and look at these salary ranges again, and see if they're still comparable with other cities around us. Because with the budget woes that are going on in cities all across the Central Valley, I really feel like the average and the mean numbers that we use in our comparator cities is gonna drop. So I, I wanna make sure that we're not above, above that average. And if we lock ourselves into this matrix right now, we don't have a lot of protection a year from now. So since we're in a freeze, there's not really a rush to do it right now, so.
I think that's an excellent idea, I would agree with that.
Any other comments?
Does this give you any issues? In other words, if these aren't adopted, and we did away with the other one, are we in a limbo, or do you have established personnel?
No, there's still a salary range, and it's, it's identical to that. And, you know, once an employee's been here five years, they're at the top of the range. So it, it really-
So what you'll fall back to is the cap?
Right, and the salary range that was established last year, which is what we have tonight, but yeah. It, it won't really make a difference. Right, until we get a new employee. If a department head leaves, and then we would have to look at it at that point.
I was just, I was asking the question, what happens right now? Everybody's kinda set in their, their salary ranges, if a department head leaves and we get a new one, and they wouldn't be placed into that system, I don't know if that would create any issues or not.
Does that affect the one new employee, department head?
No.
We cha, we changed the building inspector from what it was to-
Mid-midi. Okay, okay. Okay, well, there's no further discussion, is there a motion on the floor? I'm sorry, is there a comment, someone?
Uh, D7, Rick, did you wanna speak?
He already did.
Okay, uh, Mr. Jimenez, okay. And that was all I had for seven.
Okay. And my comment still stands, is there a motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion that we postpone making the decision on the salary range for one year.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Two seconds, or first, second, and third? We'll call for any further discussion. Now, call for the vote, Barbara?
Aye.
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 Now we have, Andrew, you have two items here?
Item nine is the Galt Festival 2009, item 10 is the 14th Annual Galt Strawberry Festival. And before you go on, uh, Andrew, I just like, there's a typo on the agenda in reference to the staff report on the Strawberry Fe- Festival. On your agenda, if you look, it states that, uh, waive a rental fee, uh, in the amount of $22.50. It should've said a rental fee of $22.50 for use of the market grounds.
So it's not waiving?
No, no, if you look at the staff report, it-
That's what I was gonna ask you, something with contracts.
Yeah, it, yeah, so, I just caught it this evening, Liz.
We take it up with staff?
No, it's not on the staff report, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it, there is a, it's recommended by staff, a rental fee of $22.50.
And that's the full amount?
Correct.
Oh, okay, yeah, we don't take that.
Yeah, you see, I think whoever types up the agenda is, because on, on the Galt Festival, it's, it's recommended by staff, waive all fees.
I missed it too, until you started.
Well, I just caught it going, it was pulled from the item, and I started looking at it in detail, and I saw that-
Rental fee.
And we do have, uh, if there's any questions regarding the festival, item nine, co-chairman Brenda Rampros is in the audience, if you'd like to address any concerns.
Well, my only concern was, we're talking about, and I've already talked to the chief of police about this, this is under the, uh, financial impact portion. Uh, I, I think we were asking the-
we were asking the Golf Festival Committee to provide their own private security.
They, historically, they do. They, they do provide their own security, uh, at the Bear Garden, also they patrol the, uh, the carnival area.
So, we're not asking them to do anything above what they've done?
No, no, no. No, all, all they need to do, and like in past years, is just run by, uh, with the chief, our police personnel, their security guards, and everything of that nature, so.
All right, and that answers my question, thank you, boys. At this time, then, I would like to make a motion to approve staff recommendation for item D nine, the Golf Festival two thousand and nine.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? No, call for the vote?
Hi.
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 And now that I've also had my question answered on item ten, I would like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation for D ten, the Fourteenth Annual Golf Strawberry Festival.
The leading waiver of fee.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded?
Hi.
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 And there was no further discussion? Hi.
I'll move the balance of the consent agenda.
Second.
No further discussion? Call for the vote?
Hi.
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 Hi. All right, well. Okay, next item, department reports.
Okay, let me read it. Subject is purchase of cloth filter media equipment for tertiary filtration and UV disinfection equipment for UV disinfection improvements project.
Good morning, members of the council, uh, we have a couple of recommendations for you, the first is that the council waives an irregularity in the Trojan Technologies bid relating to the California Department of Public Health certificate for Title twenty-two compliance, uh, we also ask that you authorize the city manager to execute contracts in conjunction with the UV disinfection and tertiary filtration upgrade project, this is for the purchase of the UV disinfection equipment, and the base proposal amount of eight hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars with Trojan Technologies, and, uh, an amount of eight hundred thousand, six hundred and forty dollars with Kruger for the tertiary filtration equipment. Back in August, uh, two thousand and eight, council approved a contract with West Joost for the final design of the tertiary filtration and UV disinfection equipment for our treatment plant. We previously had done some pilot testing to pick the technologies, but the specific characteristics of each of the different vendors vary. We decided to prebid these two components to allow the vendors to give us their submittals, and to pick the actual, select the vendors so we could then incorporate their specific requirements into our final design. The intent is that the city will enter an agreement with each of these manufacturers to purchase the UV disinfection equipment or the filter equipment, then that contract will be reassigned to the prime contractor while we select him through a competitive bid process to build the overall plant. The award of the contract to the individual vendors at this time will allow them to prepare and submit shop drawings that are needed for West Joost in preparation of the final design. In order to account for differences in the installation cost versus operating cost of the UV equipment, that contract is to be, was, uh, selected based upon the twenty-year life cycle of initial installation cost as well as operating cost, that takes into differences into account such as bulb maintenance and electricity cost. Uh, we received four bids for the UV disinfection equipment in January, was listed in your agenda report, the engineer's estimate was a million dollars, the low bid was Trojan, a base bid proposal of eight hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars, they had the lowest life cycle cost of about two point five five nine million, that is the, the recommendation for the award. Trojan also submitted an alternate bid that had a little bit lower initial cost, but it did have a higher life cycle cost. We also received bids from Azonea and Wedeco. Uh, Trojan is the apparent low bidder, uh, Trojan and Azonea both submitted clarifications and conditions with their bid, um, we have worked with, uh, both of them, it turns out at the end of the day, that Trojan had one irregularity that we're asking council to waive, Azonea had, uh, a number that we felt were not acceptable to the city, so we rejected their bid, also we believe that, um, although Wedeco was in fact full and complete and responsive, their price was significantly higher, both in the capital cost and in the annual maintenance cost. The way where they're asking council to consider is a requirement that the vendor have a California Department of Public Health certificate relative to Title twenty-two requirements, this is a requirement for the recycled use of wastewater, for, which we will not be doing for several years. Trojan technically has the certificate, but it was obtained with faulty dat- data, they found there was an error in the test, not their fault, testing lab made some da- some errors, they've told the state about it, they've resubmitted the, the information to the state, it's currently being reviewed, we don't believe this is a significant issue at this time, is, is just a matter of time before they get the certificate, and we will not be ready to need this certificate for several years, uh, relative to use, use of recycled waters, we believe it's in the city's best interest to waive that irregularity. The cloth filter equipment bids were open on March twelfth, and we, we only received one bid in the amount of eight hundred thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. Uh, one of the requirements, the bid, was that the filter manufacturers had filters operating in California, since we're, again, working toward Title twenty-two requirements, we wanna make sure they had stuff that actually worked here and had a history, that limited us to two bidders, one of the other bidders, uh, that we anticipated bidding actually did the prior, the pilot testing, and they anticipated they would end up with the sole source, and they found out that they were bidding against Kruger, they could not be competitive, so they did not submit a bid. Kruger also submitted some conditions, we're in the process right now of working through those, because that bid was substantially later, we have not worked through all of them, some of their, uh, requests that we look at, changes in identifications, limits of liability, warranties, liquidated damages, and those kinda things. Uh, we do believe that we'll be able to successfully negotiate a contract acceptable to the city, and due to the time constraints, we're asking that the council authorize the city manager with assistance from the city attorney to negotiate that final contract, uh, we don't anticipate that the cost will change at all, just perhaps a little liability. Um, if we cannot come to terms with that, we will bring it back to the council, possibly at the April seventh meeting, to have council reject the bids, and we'll have to go out and rebid the project. One of the things that we're also facing is a, a recent change in the state revolving fund loan process, originally we were told we were ineligible for the stimulus funding because we already had an application in, um, they've now told us they're only processing stimulus loans, the good news for us is that we may be able to get a one percent loan versus a two and a half percent loan, so it's about a three million dollar savings over the life of the, the project. The bad news is that they've changed the rules on how we bid the projects, that we can't go back and do it over again, we're attempting to work through those issues, but we may end up not allowing these two contracts to be part of the revolving fund loan bid. Uh, the good news is we have enough cash on hand from the, people paying those rates, we'll be able to fund that ourselves, we'd like to bid it over again, but unfortunately we just don't have enough time to allow them to do their shop drawings to incorporate it into the final design by West Joost and bid and build the entire project. Uh, completion of the final design is anticipated in July of this year, that's why we have the tight timeframe, uh, we wanna begin construction by the end of August, and have it in the ground by our May tenth, two thousand and ten implementation date. Again, the, the, the amounts that we're looking at right now are listed in your staff report of about eight hundred and forty thousand for Trojan, and eight hundred thousand for Kruger, uh, the city will only pay five percent of these amounts to each of these vendors directly, the remainder we pay to them through the prime contractor. Please, I'll report, I'm happy to ask any questions you might have.
Greg, I did have one question, I had gotten an email from a member of our oversight committee before that had to do with the Trojan filtration system, and it was a, a problem that had to do with delaminating, if I, if I remember correctly, uh, they said they'd given direction to staff to get some clarification on what that was, do you remember what, whatever came of that?
Okay, I don't recall that direction, um, Trojan is also the provider for the UV, not the filtration, I am aware that there, there have been some problems in other plants with delamination, they're currently, we, we spoke with those cities today, they're currently working, Kruger's wo- working with those and have it fixed to the problem, we would happily provide that back to the, to the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from other council members?
So, if you do find out some information, you'll bring it back to us, Greg?
I can sort of send it back to you, right, was that information included in the, uh, recent, uh, summoning report from the...
That might've been where I read it from, we got an email from Mr. Molson with, uh, some of their minutes, it might've been in that.
Right, unfortunately, Mr. Molson neglected the sentence of staff.
Okay.
To myself, so I only got it from Councilman Payne, was kind enough to forward it to me.
I'm fine with it.
Go ahead.
One, one of the recommendations, we went out there and we actually saw one of the Kruger, um, filtrations, and it was delaminating, and we asked the individual out there what there, if there was any problem with this, and he showed us that there was a problem, so, one, one of the things that we wanted to make clear to staff was, be aware that there's a problem with the delamination of these cloth filters that they're gonna use, so that's very important that we understand where we're coming from and where we're going to, knowing that this is a problem, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if there is found to be some type of a, of a faulty manufacturing process, we would be able to either recapture our money or, or get a replacement, right?
Yes, the manufacturer is responsible for a working technology.
Okay.
This problem, uh, so my staff talked with these other agencies today, Kruger has been working with them to resolve the problem, and I understand that it has been resolved.
Great.
They need to provide us a working, there's, there's a performance guarantee in this project, so it needs to work, and it needs to work for the full year, there's a performance objective for that.
Thank you, Greg.
Uh, any further, no further discussion, I'll ask for a motion.
I move staff's recommendation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? None? Call for the vote?
Hi.
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 Hi. True. Next item, city clerks' report.
Um, I'll just read it, appointment to wastewater treatment plant upgrade oversight committee, currently there's, my staff report indicates there is one vacancy, but there is actually two vacancies now on the upgrade oversight committee, um, due to the resignation of Mark Sherrill and Rick Stansel. At this time, well, we published twice in the Gulf Herald, and we received no letters of interest, so this time we're looking for direction from council.
Okay, comments from council?
My appointee, Mark Sherrill, had, uh, indicated that he was satisfied with staff's, um, performance and had confidence in them, my only question would be, is there any reason why the, the committee could not continue with just three members, since we've had no, uh, no, no other interest from the public? Do we have to amend our bylaws, or?
I'll do, that's my only, you do, I have it.
We'll hold, uh, any comments for the speaker then, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Uh, yes, Jerry Stripling, I haven't been here before, um, on the wastewater upgrade committee, uh, prior to appointing them, there was a rejection on not letting anybody from outside the city limits, uh, be on this committee, uh, why, I don't know, you just let, uh, a person from the planning commission, which is committee that, uh, is, he's one of the more important things around here, uh, he, he lives probably three or four miles out of town, I live about three hu- four hundred feet out of town, three hundred feet out of town, and I couldn't understand why, um, that was limited, I have my suspicions, but I couldn't, uh, you know, I was interested at the time on, and I was not allowed to, uh, be on the committee for some reason, uh, that's why, uh, probably one of the reasons you guys haven't got any response towards it, it should've been opened up to anybody in the area, just like all the other committees, so, that's all I have to say.
Well, I, I never supported the committee to begin with, and given how much it's diminished, uh, I would say at the next meeting, well, we bring back an agenda so that people know that, consider either abolishing the committee, or see if we wanna appoint now that we're too down. Or...
Yeah, that, and, I guess if you guys fulfilled the obligation, I mean, that's the staff report that, that I probably need, I wasn't, I wasn't here when it was developed and started.
The intent of the original committee was, I believe, to provide an oversight committee for the lifetime of the upgrade, and appointees were, were selected for the lifetime of the project, was, was, was just the upgrade of the plant, which would take us through construction through, uh, at least through May two thousand and ten, perhaps a year after that relative to the implementation of all the improvements, uh, since the original charter was approved by council, that has expanded to include the water meter implementation plan, and also the rate study, and the water meter will be doing some this year, but the council has not made a decision on the second phase, the water meter implementation, so that could go out as late as twenty, two thousand and twenty-four, so this could become a semi-permanent committee if, if that charter is not changed, so they have not fulfilled the original obligation was to provide, was to provide oversight through the entirety of the upgrade.
Okay.
Before we get, go a little further, I just wanna consult our attorney, because Mr. Stripling, uh, excuse me, brought up, uh, a good point, we have appointed somebody on our planning commission who lives quite a ways outside the city limits, is there any reason he cannot, what, what's the difference between that and having, uh, Mr. Stripling, uh, sit on our wastewater treatment plant oversight committee?
It'd be, uh, whatever the rules, rules that are set forth in the, uh, in the resolution established in the committee, if, if there's no restriction on appointing somebody from outside the community, uh, city boundaries, then there's, then that appointment would be lawful.
Okay, well, I don't know why he didn't have the opportunity at the beginning when he asked, but it'd be my recommendation, is we print it again in the paper, give another opportunity, let's get some applications, if Mr. Stripling is willing and eager, uh, I definitely would give him my support on the issue, I think the oversight committee's done a good job overall, I mean, I know, Daryl, you may not agree with it, but they've been, uh, they've worked really hard, I mean, they've put a lot of time and effort into this, and, you know, uh, and sometimes we don't agree with them, and at the times I do agree with them, so, I'm very pleased with what they've done, I think they've done what so many other of our citizens haven't stepped up their plate to, and that's getting involved, and I'd like to see them stick around.
Clarification, the original charter, uh, approved, prepared by staff, approved by the council, limited the, uh, involvement relative to citizens within Galt, uh, but the council approved that, so I don't need, there's any, why that could not be changed, we just have to bring it back.
I would say change it.
And officially change the charter.
Okay.
I have a comment, uh, the committee members, were they chosen, were, uh, the council members just decided, you know, kinda amongst you who the five would be, or is it like all the other committees were?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I have no one there.
No, no, each council member appointed one person.
And I think the one, the other person that resigned was your appointing, okay.
And the other person that resigned was a former councilman, Roboy's appointment, which...
That was Rick.
Which would technically, technically now be your appointment, so, you would, if, I'll defer to the city attorney, but if we were to make two more selections, Vice Mayor Payne would get one, and then you would get one as well.
Right.
So, my motion would be to bring this back, we can wait two meetings, since we've already filled up the first one in April, to the second meeting in April, uh, and consider any and all the options from appointing two replacements, to considering if the committee has met the needs that the council felt it needed to.
Would you like me to bring back the charter as it's written today?
Yeah.
And you can review it and, if you want changes?
Yep.
Yeah, I think so, okay.
Okay.
So, that's a motion?
It is.
I'll second it.
Call for the vote, oh, any further discussion? None? We'll call for the vote?
Hi.
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 Hi. Comments by city council members?
Sir, Mayor, let me hold you there a minute, they've left off...
Sir, Mayor, let me hold you there a minute. They've left off staff comments.
I just, as I was reading, I says, wait a minute.
Yeah.
You guys don't have anything to say?
Uh, Greg has a comment and then Kurt has a comment, then I do.
Sure.
Just want the council and the public to know that the Union Pacific Railroad is gonna be doing some work in town. You may have noticed the big mountains of railroad ties that have been here for a couple of months. We found out they're gonna be starting on April sixth through the eighth, closing Twin Cities Road at the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. It will be closed in its entirety. They're gonna actually be removing the concrete panels at the tracks and doing a little repair work. And so, they have to totally close the roadway. That's gonna happen those three days, weather and schedule permitting, and then they're gonna be working in Galt, moving through from the eighth all the way through the twenty-third of April. My staff has been in coordination with them. We're gonna be doing a lot of asphalt repair work. They're gonna repair the track. It's up to us to then repair the streets. Right now, we're planning on kind of leapfrogging every other street, so we'll end up with closures that are intermittent. You may only have to go a block or two out of the way. We're putting signs out, advance notice signs, provide detours to minimize inconvenience as best we can. The railroad does have a way, though, of doing things at their own at the last minute, and so we ask for the public's patience in consideration that they have a block, just go a couple of blocks out of your way and get around it.
Did they give you a detour route for the Twin Cities road closure?
Could you repeat where and when that first one is?
The first one is April sixth through April eighth. It's on, I don't have the, I just have the notice of the dates.
Let's make sure we get that in the paper too.
Yeah.
So, that's in the county.
I'm sure you're working.
We're putting information in the paper for the streets within the city. That was included, the newsletter that's going out. We did not take the responsibility of noticing, we didn't even know when they were doing the work in the county.
Now, let's include, I think the Twin Cities.
I would think so. It's the main transportation corridor for many residents.
Which crossing on Twin Cities? I wanna be clear.
It's the Union Pacific Crossing.
Which is?
Which is.
Post-Tour Treatment Plant.
Oh, the Puma Plant, yes. West of ninety-nine.
I see what you mean.
Yeah, I wanna make sure everybody knows which one we're talking about. Cause there's one all the way out Franklin Road and there's one on the way to Harold, so.
This is the one west of town. It's the main line, not the Spurling.
So, for twenty-four hours a day?
Twenty-four, my understanding is twenty-four hours a day, three days.
Wow.
It will be totally closed.
Well, they're doing Grant Line, I believe, this weekend.
Yes, they started back in February, coming from Sacramento, they're going all the way down, I believe, through Fresno. And what they're telling us basically, they need a day to do their work, so it's a day for us to remove the pavement, a day for them to do their work, and a day for us to put it back. That is assuming we can get asphalt on those days, we can stockpile it, and everything goes according to the plan, which probably there'll be some hiccup at some point during the system.
How far in advance will signs be put up for the people?
We're working on that now. We're, we just finished our schedule last week. We'd like to put them up three or four days in advance. I don't, I don't know, again, we're not, right now, we have not done anything relative to Twin Cities. That stuff in the county was, I just found out the date is happening.
I was just gonna tell you that Grant on Highway ninety-nine, they already posted that like last Friday and maybe before, letting, you know how they post that out about ten days? I'm sure Twin Cities at ninety-nine is posted. I'm sure they'll put the, we can check.
We could coordinate whoever county or, I mean, that's gonna be a huge traffic problem.
It should be posted at the Twin Cities off-ramp on I-5. It should be posted at Franklin.
Yep.
Can you just verify that?
On behalf of, I'm gonna copy the detour plan.
Scott County.
Wow. I'm surprised that they don't already have something out there, because in some of the other roads that they've worked on, I mean, they're out there a couple of weeks in advance. They've got signs, so you know ahead of time, because especially Twin Cities being such a major road and traffic, heavily traveled on, I'm surprised they haven't already done that.
Well, like Grant Line too, same way. That's why I noticed that, I see a couple of people out in the audience asking for a lot.
I'm surprised they haven't already done that.
Thank you, Greg.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks for the great news, Greg.
Kurt, sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Members of Council, the, this week, you should by Friday have new copies of the existing conditions report on the general plan. All council members have that, have had it. The policy document you received back in oh-seven, when the, late oh-seven, when the commission was reviewing the draft policies, you'll note in that, we've highlighted those areas where commission changed things from the document you originally received and then based on the final EIR, there are additional mitigation measures, but that's all highlighted and noted in the document. You'll also receive the draft EIR, and the only new document, totally new document, will be the final EIR, in addition to the staff report and the resolution with findings. So, that should be available to you by Friday. We're hoping to get it to the clerk's office sometime tomorrow. I'm allowing for at least one day of glitches and getting all the documents. I plan to provide hard copies to everybody, except Darrell, did you just want CDs?
Just electronic.
Just, okay, a CD and a, does anybody else?
Something about that big would be great.
Okay. Does anybody else want it in CD format?
I'd like to have it in CD.
I would like it also.
CD and hard copies?
CD's fine.
I just want CDs.
That's all I need, CDs.
Oh, okay.
My office is already starting to look like Darrell's back there, so.
So, all three CDs and then hard copies and hard copies.
You know, I'm fine with whatever you're gonna do, if it's easier just to do it all.
I will have hard copies available. I ordered them because if I don't keep them in my office, the clerk will have them and, you know, in the future, people will want.
But I'll just make the hard copy.
Okay, hard copy. Okay, great. If you have any questions, please give me a call. I'm just scheduled for the seventh of April. I'll look at it.
And we'll take extras cause we'll sell some.
For the, for the council, last Wednesday, CAS met, the main issue was the youth master plan. The committee decided to have an advisory committee, and so probably on the twenty-first, we should put an item on, you can have one or two members on the advisory committee. What they will do is do the initial groundwork to determine whether there should be a youth master plan and what it should entail. When CAS meets again, they'll talk about it, but we may wanna put that on for the twenty-first.
Okay.
That's all.
Now, we've got comments by city council members?
I'll start with me.
Barbara?
I just mentioned that I, as an alternate, attended the CAS meeting. Felt it was very successful, very informative. The most important thing I have to discuss is Wendy Hope Street Lights. Back in December, I met with them at their neighborhood watch meeting and they expressed a concern that there's not enough lighting for safety in that area. I think if I remember correctly, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, there's like one, maybe two on Park and along Camilla. I don't know that there's any.
One on that section of Park and none on Camilla and five throughout there on Wendy Hope.
And I had discussed this with Greg just briefly and he had a couple of suggestions. What I'd like for the council to do is to authorize Greg to look into it further and see what options that he can come back regarding the funding. That's the biggest issue. They did ask Crime Stoppers, the Neighborhood Watch did ask Crime Stoppers to provide them with those security lights that come on with motions. Crime Stoppers didn't feel like they wanted to do that. The other problem in that area is that there are a lot of rentals and to get the landlords to pay any money for lights of any kind is gonna be difficult, even if it's just a twelve, thirteen dollar security motion light for your garage. So, if the council would agree, I'd like to ask Greg to come back with some ideas. I think that it's an older neighborhood, if not the oldest neighborhood in Galt, and I think we all have a concern about security. I know the ladies that just left from Meadowview, that was a big issue that they had in their neighborhood, and we did what we could out there. And for the short term, I'd like to maybe get Greg's suggestions for the Wendy Hope, but then for the long term, maybe come up with a policy that would cover any neighborhood that might have a problem with lighting, so that we have some guidelines to go by as far as what the city's willing to do.
Actually, you'd sent me an email on the subject matter and I responded to you and I, what I explained was is that I've been working on this issue. I've contacted Nancy Boo, who has recently voted, elected to the S MUD Board, as you know, in discussion of a two-by-two here with the city in S MUD, and I'm working on that. I also have some other solutions or alternative ideas on this that we've been working on, but there's some other legal issues in that that have to be oversung. So, since you brought it up, what I'd like to do, if nobody else minds, I'd like to work with Greg with what I've already come up with, and maybe we can work together on the solutions and I can show you where we're at on this, as far as moving forward, if nobody else minds. And then in addition, hopefully in the near future, I'd like to see us come back with a two-by-two with S MUD.
I, I did have your email and I think I had emailed you back on the fifth and I had met with Mrs. Kennenberg, I think is the way you pronounce her name, right before you left for Washington, and reported to her that we were, we were definitely working on the problem and hoped that we would have some suggestions by the second meeting in April. And as far as you're working with Greg, I have no problem with that. I just felt an obligation to respond since she had brought to my attention in December, so.
There's nothing wrong with that. That's okay.
Okay. And a couple other things, then. That was the most important thing. Oh, we need to decide then, as a council, if that, if that's okay.
Let me just throw out one of the things on the lighting and the streets and everything. When, Don, when you and I get to Safety Committee, that's one of the things we had looked at in the past, so I just thought I'd throw that, throw that out there. We looked at lighting and streets and it covered an array and working with, you know, whatever department it is.
Yeah, you're right. And what we're talking about, Randy, is actually, cause I've been looking at it, Andrew and I have actually been working together on this, but it is a long-term issue. It's not anything we're going to accomplish in a short period of time, Greg. You correct me if I'm wrong. That's right. It's all gonna come down to dollars and we're gonna have to build a good, strong relationship and, and we're gonna have to see what we can do, even on, as far as an immediate solution, as far as floodlight, or, I'm sorry, floodlights, et cetera, porch lights, even that in itself has a few obstacles. So, if you were to send me her email, I can explain it to her probably in a little more detail, Barbara.
I can say to her, um.
Or, I'd rather her phone number.
How about if I send her yours and then?
That's fine, you can do that. I have no problem with that. And then we'll discuss it a little further, but yeah, that's where we stand.
Also, you had mentioned about the S MUD two-by-two. Ted and I just started that meeting with them.
Well, that's not the conversation I had with Nancy Boo, cause I'd spoken to her not more than a couple of months ago.
Well.
Ted, you wanna enlighten me a little bit? Did something go by?
They contacted us and, and set the meeting and the representative from the S MUD office and Nancy Bowie were the ones that directed the meeting and we met with them last week.
Well, I can't, what Don was referring to, and I remember Nancy Bowie made this comment to me as well. She was interested in establishing a two-by-two, two appointed officials from each city in her jurisdiction, which I think is Galt, Elk Grove, Folsom.
Right.
Rancho Cordova. And two members, well, herself and then a representative of staff from S MUD, so. I don't know if she's made any headway with actually proposing that to any of the cities in our jurisdiction, but I haven't read anything about it.
What they did is met with us and said that they would like to meet.
Well, they wanted to meet monthly, but we decided.
Quarterly.
Quarterly, or as a need.
Okay, I'd like to finish my comments.
I'm sorry. I was just following it from the S MUD people.
Yeah. Quickly, the only two things I needed to report on is I attended with, in the city of Elk Grove, it's called the ninety-nine challenge, and Lowdi, Elk Grove, and Galt are trying to form a, sort of a coalition to address the needs of ninety-nine. The main issue that we talked about was the congestion, and we talked about in the short term, a express-type bus, commuter bus, as well. The long term, maybe the ACE rail system would be established. And those meetings will continue in the future to solve or to work with Caltrans or Union Pacific on whatever issues might come up. Also, attended the March on Wheels. That's a special observance of the Wheels on Wheels program, and now I'm through.
As I mentioned, we were able to approve at Secog a number of issues for the region, including some ice improvements that'll come to Galt, and Greg will be handling that and getting back to you as the money comes and I'll leave it, when the money physically comes, but at least we know when it gets here, how we're gonna do it. There's still a lot of stimulus money, of course, floating around out there, and so all of us, I'm sure, will be working any way we can to see which of those programs we might qualify for, and a lot of that has not been determined yet. I was talking to one of the people back there today and it's just, it's happening so fast, they can't even keep track of it themselves, let alone what the guidelines are. So, I had a meeting with Congresswoman Matt Suie's representative on some of these issues. I was back in Washington DC twice in the last three weeks, working on some of these, and Mayor sent the letter, and I think all of us, or three of us at least, have also personally thanked Congressman Lundgren and his staff for the work they did. I had meetings with Feinstein's and Boxer's people. I'll be back there again next month. And so, there's some real opportunities. I personally, quite frankly, have some issues with the money that's just being thrown out, but given that it is, our city should attempt to get as much of it as we can for our public works projects or any of the programs that qualify for the stimulus. So, but we're gonna be making some ADA improvements that have been needed and other things, so that's good. I think I mentioned before, but Secog actually got more money than we thought we would get for the region, and that also will be divvied up and sent to the cities on a formula that will be primarily for road maintenance. Those funds will be approved for, so Secog's already passed our formula and made the approvals for that, and that money will also flow into each of the communities in the Secog region. So, on the air board, we've got some things going. Stimulus program also has got some things coming into the region to help with air quality issues. There's three hundred and something million dollars gonna be coming in for a variety of technologies for diesel cleanup. So, we at the board are working within our own region and, of course, the state, to see how that's gonna be appropriated and what areas that'll go into. So, that's the main things going on. The, the item Ted brought up at the next meeting or when it comes up for the CAS, is I understand what the nature of that's going to be, I would just say probably be thinking about if everyone's comfortable, is Andrew and Barbara, I think would probably be the best two candidates. Like Andrew and I hold, if you will, the CAS position and Barbara's an alternative, but given Andrew's beginning of this area and Barbara's involvement with the youth, I think Barbara'd be a better fit than me for that. So, just give that some thought before we get back to it, but glad to see that's moving forward. And that's it.
Good, thank you. Okay, I put on here, Consumis, CSD, the Consumis Community Service District. Darrell, you and I were on a two-by-two before we'd had the legal issues and whatnot, and I think there's probably no better time than now. I think we need to get back into that two-by-two and start communicating a little bit and get ahead of the curve as we move forward into two thousand and nine. I'd like to see us set up a meeting, if Liz can do it, where the four of us can get down once again.
Go ahead, Ted.
I called you about two weeks ago and said that that committee, the CSD one, was abolished. You competed what you were gonna do. The mayor's already started a dialogue with the CSD and with the people there.
I've met with them.
I know you've met with them, but.
And he wants to meet, Chief Foster wants to meet with me next week, and then the week after that, he wants to meet with Donna, their business manager.
Yeah, if we, if we wanted two-by-two, I have no problem, but I would step down and I can't compete with Randy's expertise in fire and between being mayor and his expertise.
Yeah, I would like to be one and two council members, cause if I can't make it, then I have a councilman.
Well, okay, I have no problem with that, but I would like to get back and communicating with them, with the two-by-two fervently.
I'm on phone with them.
Okay. The next meeting, if you can include me and then, you know, give me an opportunity, give me a couple of dates so that I can work it in.
And unfortunately, sometimes, like a lot of people, you know, they wanna meet like, you know, eight AM on a Wednesday morning and.
I know, it's hard sometimes.
I'm trying to get them, like, my days in the office are Thursdays here, so I try to do some stuff out with business people and homeowners in the day and then meet with those individuals in the afternoon, so that maybe, you know, we could coordinate something on a Thursday afternoon, maybe for.
Yeah, that would be good. That would be good.
Something like that.
We need to do full disclosure, so somebody doesn't blame us for not telling the council, but we met with, is it, help me, Mickalini?
Yeah, Battalion Chief Mickalini.
If you didn't catch that, Donna, I think he was jabbing at you with a stick.
There's a, there's an issue in regards to emergency services. They've put out a proposal for us in Elk Grove to consider to use. There's a, there's an issue in regards to emergency services. They've put out a proposal for us in Elk Grove to consider to use, uh, a position to coordinate it between the three of us. We will discuss it at the mid-year budget process and decide whether or not the city wants to participate. Our biggest problem right now is we don't have the emergency services assigned to a specific person. It is within the police. There are people that work on it, but for record-keeping and to make sure that everything is caught up to date, and that all the certifications are done and the training, uh, they've made a proposal to, uh, develop a position to do that for us, Elk Grove, and for their own, uh, uh, department. So we'll bring that back to you.
Just, just a comment too. I spoke with Donna Hanson, who's the executive director of the CSB, um, late last week, and she said, she wanted me to communicate to the council that their board would be more than happy to start up a two-by-two with the city of Galt, maybe on a quarterly basis, that they, they would have two representatives appointed by their board. If we had two representatives appointed by our council, then we'd have staff from both sides there to just have an ongoing dialogue, so they said they'd be very happy to have that started.
And that's what Chief Foster had said to me, that he wanted to meet with me first. Yeah. Great idea.
Okay, uh, in addition to it, I went, I attended the National League of Cities, the two thousand nine Congressional City Conference. Uh, we were there for, what, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Andrew and I went. I also took my son. I paid his way, of course, and I paid his way into the conference, and it was very interesting, and I'm, I have to agree with Daryl, I don't agree with the way, the money's being put out there, but it's out there, so, you know, we gotta be able to utilize it as much as we can. Uh, it was very interesting. We had, we were very fortunate that, uh, we had a lot of good guest speakers there. We had the, uh, US Attorney General is there, uh, the head of the Department of Energy. Um, it, they brought a lot of information, and, uh, I'm hoping that as time goes on, we're gonna bring back some ideas that we can utilize here. And I know that the city's already pursuing some grant money, so, uh, and I know, Daryl, you've already mentioned it, uh, to Secog, and your quality control and task, uh, meeting, so, but it was very exciting to be there, and I think it's good that we got represented. We met with our representatives, and met with staff for, uh, Barbara Boxer's office, Diane Feinstein. Again, we met with, uh, Dan Lundgren, as you'd indicated. We thanked him for everything he was able to do, um, in addition to other issues that we're dealing with, with the wastewater treatment plant up to the grade, et cetera. I also tried to get in there a little bit of word on the COPS program. There's a billion dollars out there. It's the Community Orientated Policing Program. One billion dollars in which we may be able to qualify for some positions, and I assume we've already put our application in on that, correct?
Yeah.
Right? So, I kind of tried to pitch that out there too, for the community, and I'm hoping it will come back, and we will get something out of that, so. And I'm done with that.
First thing I wanted to point out under my comments is we have our cards. They will be available starting on Thursday. You can pick one up at the city clerk's office or in the finance department. We're also talking about placing these at the Parks and Recreation Department as well. We've received about seventy-five, uh, letters of interest from people in the community that want one dropped off at their homes this weekend, so Councilman Haynes, myself, and a team of volunteers will be out doing that on Saturday and Sunday. But if you wanna pick this up, just come by the city clerk's office or the finance department for now, and you can get one. Uh, under the NLC program, since we didn't have time to get any information into this packet before it was published, I'm gonna save my whole presentation on it until our next council meeting. I got a lot of information for the rest of the council that we brought back. Uh, Councilman Haynes, though, did bring up an interesting point. There were a lot of representatives that we met with that don't agree with, uh, President Obama's stimulus package, but not a single one of them was able to offer an alternative, which I thought was quite interesting. And Donna and I had a nice little debate about that out in the hallway. We also had a, uh, chance run-in with Congressman Ron Paul.
Yes.
Was very interesting, and I'll just leave it at that.
It was, it was a good encounter. You gotta give him credit where credit belongs. He came out and spoke to us. He spent a good fifteen, twenty minutes. Any question we had, he was very open, put it right out there. Uh, he didn't hesitate to answer any questions, so he, he's very professional, and, uh, I was quite impressed, actually.
Just let Don speak his piece, and I'll keep running the mic.
Educational trip, right?
Yeah, very, very educational trip.
Good. Had a couple of things. Uh, the mayor's development forum, uh, and I wanna thank, uh, Jason and, uh, Kurt. You guys did a excellent job. I really appreciate it. You know, you jumped in, we sat down and talked, and Barbara and I, and, and I believe we, uh, sent out twenty-seven letters. We had about thirty people attend, and I was taken back, I think, just like a lot of the other people, you know? They all understood about the economy, but, you know, still, they're somewhat, you know, they're interested in coming to the community, so. And I think we all probably had other meetings that, uh, kinda went on one-on-one, and two or three or four-on-one or something, but I really appreciate that. Thank you. We kinda decided that we would have, you know, another one probably, uh, in like July or August, maybe, or something. Uh, the other, uh, item that I had gone to was the Criminal Justice Forum, and that was, uh, a meeting with, uh, judges, the DA's office. It was, uh, police chiefs, the sheriff, and the mayors and around the community. And I think you had gone, were you on that before?
Yes, I was.
It was very, very, uh, refreshing and rewarding, and, uh, I talked with the chief, and he gave me some, uh, recommendations and suggestions, and one of the things, uh, I had made calls to, uh, the mayor in Ileton and Elk Grove, and we just kinda missed each other. When we got there, and we, you know, they do the roundtable, and we all kinda jumped on them a little bit, because we understood that some of the reasons why they, the court was removed for this area, but, uh, we explained to them what it was costing us. And I explained to them what it was costing us with, you know, about thirty-two officers and the overtime that we're having to pay, you know, and the travel time. So what the three mayors have kinda got together, and we're gonna meet with a couple of the, uh, judges and one of the district attorneys to, and it's not gonna be immediate, like you talked about, long-term, but it's to try to get even a traffic court down in Elk Grove, you know, even if it's like, you know, four days a month. It's something we really need to strive for. The criminal, absolutely no way, but just the traffic court, it would help us immensely. Yeah. So I wanna thank everyone for tonight, and, uh, glad you guys had a good trip.
Yes.
And we will adjourn the meeting at, uh, what is it, nine-twenty?
Get some rest, Mr. Kurt.
I think he's headed home right now.